There's no sound.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
There.
Mrs. Morris?
Here.
And Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Okay, public participation. Robin, will you make sure that in time they have three minutes to speak? The first one being Veronica Tucker.
Hello, good evening. I'm here to address the board of the Pessies Out. I emailed each one of you the staff. This is from the parent-teacher association that was formed at the high school. Our first meeting was, excuse me, so we're good. We discussed a few things going on in the school that they also called over to officers, myself, the secretary, and Jonathan Stacey, the role of president. Working along with Mr. Logalow and Mr. McCarthy to help get the school back to where it should be. I didn't get an email which brought attention to the faculty because I only emailed that to you probably an hour ago. In the past, I've remembered that the board members have sent emails or reports. It is 2013. With technology the way it is, we need to get up on speed on that. We need to check your emails. If you can post to Facebook, we can check your emails. That being said, we talked about issues with the cell phones obviously that you were supposed to be getting some kind of underbags. I wasn't at the last board meeting, so there were some things that I did not, what we are watching that you were supposed to be getting a letter. You weren't receiving a letter. I haven't received a letter as a parent about whatever it was they were supposed to send out when you get that. Mr. Logalow or Mr. McCarthy, our program, take a look at this minutes that we have. There were concerns about maybe we need some supplemental learning, pay for shortages in Skyward, proposals on how to do that, how to get parents taught. And then, pretty much it. I thought it was a very sort of a meeting. Our last meeting in March, I don't have the minutes for that yet, but I wrote an email to you. We did get off topic in our meeting because there was concerns again about, from the parents, about the board itself and what you are doing and how what you do affects our children and students here. So, I was, my parents always said, as I say, they all said to me, you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem. If you need help learning how to use your emails, be more polite, we're happy to help you. If you need help learning to be more technologically savvy, we're happy to help you. As a parent, we're here for the kids. That's what we all should be here for. Pretty much all you got. If anyone wants the rest of my minutes, go right ahead.
Jeff?
Once again, another two weeks have passed without any communication or answers to our questions. On February 23rd, we were told by the school attorney, Joe Urban, that we would be getting updated on short order with answers to a lot of their questions. It stated this message would be on the school board website and a note would be sent home via the backpack system. And I checked the website daily and have been asking my daughter daily for that backpack note and neither one of them has come through. It's very obvious that yet another small bag is in place for the many rumors that are running rampant throughout this district. What is it going to take for us to get the answers that we deserve from this board? It seems every week I attend that your information that brings you down another question that we need answers for. In the findings meeting this past week, there was a question asked about the check register. The question that was asked was what the $15,000 was for in a check that was made to a law When that question came about, there was a statement made that yes, attorney fees are adding up and we've had to adjust the budget numerous times for that reason. This leads me to the following questions that we are still waiting on answers for. Are the proper attorneys being used? Isn't the district using the insurance company's attorney? Why should this district have to pay for additional attorney fees? Shouldn't they be paid by the school insurance company? I understand that there was a case filed with NERC, Michigan Employment Relations Commission, for a unit clarification over the last couple of weeks. This suit is based on improper hiring of personnel positions throughout the district and were filed without posting the jobs or vacancies. I'm sorry, never filled without posting the jobs or vacancies. I also understand that some of these positions were held by current employees of previous years. The new employees that were hired are being paid substantially more than what they could have been billed. Should I give my three minutes? My three minutes are cut off. I just. Number three, why is Tom Hill still on safety, getting his regular pay? I asked that two weeks ago and have yet to have an answer. The other question I answered asked a couple of weeks ago was, how can it be possible for him to sign a termination agreement for $37,960 for an employee that was terminated and you guys don't know anything about it? What is the punishment for Mr. Hill for making those decisions? Based on the policy manual in the handbook, it should be immediate termination. We shouldn't even be discussing his pay. I also want to know the board members or members that knew about this. I know for a fact there are board members that knew about this contract before it was I cannot in the light of me understand how this could happen. In closing, I would like to address an ongoing issue with members of this court that demonstrates their incompetence as leaders of this district. The topic was brought up the last meeting, again, that I'm having a very hard time understanding. It was stated again that the president of this board does not get emails sent to her school email address. This same time led to a very heated discussion between myself and the vice president of this school board. I cannot in the light of me, again, understand why the two top board members, the two top positions held by board members, continue to say they don't know how to use their school email or they don't use their school email. That is unacceptable. I'm not sure if you understand, but there was just a big issue that was brought up in our government.
Three minutes.
Would Kelly Clinton have the same issue?
Thank you for this opportunity to address the school board and Bridgeport education community. We've had some positive developments in our district of late. Discipline is improving in the hallways. We still have room for improvement in the classrooms. Staff communication is improving. I'm able to talk to my principal once a week, get a lot done. Grant writing is moving forward with a short list of priorities, including taking care of our paper shortage, which has been done, buying textbooks, providing classroom tech, elective classes, teaching supplies, and additional athletic equipment. However, we still have some problems. They include following the student handbook. As yet, we do not have a concrete phone policy. Several policies that have been offered to administration, we haven't got anything accepted at this point. We also have a lot of uncertainty in the superintendent's position. Our interim superintendent is doing two jobs and doing them quite well, given the circumstances. However, existing policies that were put in place at the beginning of the year are still hurting our education community. We still have shortages of teacher supplies. We still have some overcrowded classrooms. We have low staff morale. We have still not put back together our intervention programs that kept students in school and learning. We also have a large loss of experienced teachers and staff. And of course, we're incurring unnecessary legal fees. In a lot of ways, we started out the year in a hostile working environment. Some of that still continues to this day. I think at this point, we need to make a decision as to whether Mr. Hill works here or not. Any questions? The solution here is to rebuild bridges with the community. When we said we had a paper shortage, the community responded, took care of that problem within a week. When we say we need help, they usually take care of it. Grant writing will relieve some of the funding problems. In order to accomplish this recovery, we need strong, decisive leadership. We need it right now. We can't wait. Thank you.
I'd like to say I'm a young man in June, New Texas, I grew up, I have a father, you know, roll my book on, you know, I have been blessed to have a few made this opportunity to have this community to have grown and performance in this conversation. I'd like to push the stuff up, a parent and our coach has been definitely fired. I'm hearing that. He's under investigation. This is why community members, our teachers, athletic coaches, stuff like that. I'd like to understand what's going on, as much as it makes a person angry, because I'm thinking everybody spends as much time with the man as much as he is a football player. Get a love understanding, everything he does sports, I just like to understand. So, is it an investigation? Well, it's easy to investigate. It's two words that go together, I'm trying to figure it out. God is saying he's fired and all sorts of things, I can't believe this. Phil came in, I believe Friday, saying our coach got fired, then it's a death and then he can't come back. But that's kind of our loss. It is our loss to be more specific, because he's more than a coach. He's a leader, he's a role model, only off of him. He tells us the stuff to do and how to prepare for life. He can go on and on to college sports. He's the type of young man, he said he's going to be the football coach. He's there. He's there. That's what I get that. And I don't know of a coach that is out around the north side, south side, west side, east side, to go pick up a coach, to go pick up kids in the summer times, 85 degrees, and pack in the car, trying to be ready for football. Here we have one big season, that's hard for them, play runs for them. But I just like to understand that. That's our coach, that's the man that we love. Nobody out there putting in as much time as he does. You name somebody that's sending kids to college, wasting time in some time in the last five years, not including Mr. Jackson, for football, for athletics, for something great. Some of us is strong enough now. Y'all take that away, what else we gonna do? You just heard the teacher talking about how bad the district is and messed it up all first semester by the way. We still come here talking about the same situation. So, when this stuff gonna change? We're not gonna hear a sign, despite us the schools, we can't see.
Will you have a new lawyer?
I'm a young man that was totally recruited by Coach Jackson. Yes, when we were at a football camp, my coach didn't have a job. Me and my fellow teammates, we asked Coach Jackson if you could follow him. He being a generous man, he was, said yeah, go ahead. I mean, he's a generous man. From hearing about all of the athletes here, them knowing that Coach Jackson might not be here anymore, has hurt everyone here. Just knowing he sees Coach Jackson as the type of guy that would do anything for a young man. Coach Jackson has gotten people scholarships that they never even thought about. I mean, got them kids in the playing football. Kids that hadn't even touched the field have gotten scholarships because he cares. I can guarantee you there's no other coach in Saguino that cares as much as him, just from talking to the kids here at Bridgeport High School. Me personally, I'm in the middle of all this. I was not recruited. I was not. And nobody ever asked me that question. Yet I got pulled into the office, I will never ask where you recruited, never once. They asked me from my phone, they never talked to my parents, never, not once. Now, that's the worst of the best of this on my behalf. They called my aunt afterward, they never called my dad, they never asked me anything. So, in my case, this is all backwards, it's been a wrong. So, I got it.
Good afternoon. This lady is from East Florida. She is not able to make it today, but I'm ordering her to play the quarterback. I am responding to all the accusations involving my son Lawrence Cordell regarding Anwar Jackson. I have talked with Mr. McCarthy and Mr. Rashad and told them both, my son transferred to Bridgeport was solely because Bridgeport offered an E20 program where our field only offered players, which is not acceptable to D1 colleges. Do not, did not want to discredit any program at Bridgeport first of all. Would have been the last school, Bridgeport would have been the last school, excuse me, that I would have transferred my son to a collegiate sport like the accusations from Mr. Townsend and Chain. And I have reported to the MHSAA. My son did participate in a clinic held at SBSU January 2015. Him also, and was in attendance and never saw Mr. Jackson work this clinic. The jerseys were used, the jerseys were used as they always are used at most clinics, to prevent the lineman shirts from being ripped. This camp slash clinic was what I found inappropriate to a staff at Bridgeport, telling my son to take out his phone and making him give up his pass code so he can go through. My son is a minor, that is my phone, and no one has the right to go through my phone without notifying me first. These accusations of Mr. Townsend is making and ruining my son's self-esteem, confidence, and reputation. If any children are not receiving the education and commitment from the administrator at the school, their attendance should not be allowed at this school and offer them more. I thought the school system is here for the kids, not the adults to swing the personal issues on shoulders of our kids. Mr. Jackson has done nothing, been a positive role model to all kids, no matter what race, living situation, or school they attend, Ms. Ford.
I'm sorry, what was this? Lawrence Ford?
Good afternoon. I am the boss of Anwar Jackson. And I'm here on behalf of Anwar Jackson. I and his father, who is deceased, died with the good Lord's help, he left me in charge of Anwar. When I heard about these accusations that Fred Thompson put up on Anwar, I went to him and I asked Anwar. I am the mother of that child. I asked him. I called, this is the hour, to help me get this stuff straight out. I'm here to Anwar, the graduate alumni of this school, that Fred Thompson should take his name and tarnish his name and leave his name, get tarnished here at Bridgeport. It's not fair to these kids. Anwar has been good to these kids. Anwar has been all the way across, switched state, all the way around the world. He's trying his best for these kids. I don't believe Anwar would call anyone here to try to recruit. Anwar has a child down in that house. Anwar could have brought his child in to play football. Very long young man was here for football. Anwar took a kid out of Flint that was having a mother, father coming to divorce, was getting ready to leave each other. Anwar made this child a fan on the field. He didn't know any more. This child came to live at our house for a year and a half. The parent, he was in my brother's house. Anwar brought this child here. I'm asking you all to reconsider what has happened. I understand that Fred Thompson wrote this letter to the Michigan Association. I heard that the stat my boy down there don't know anything about this, but Bridgeport does. Bridgeport know all about this, but the people down here sitting at the stat my boy don't know nothing about this. How did you all take this and let this get out of hand like this? I think he's a man. Give Anwar a chance, this kid, your father, that young man. Don't set these kids aside. Give these kids a chance. Let Anwar be known for what he has done. I don't believe you would hurt these kids.
Andrew Jackson?
Anwar's a big brother I raised when my father died. I live in Indianapolis. This is why I live there. I worked, I worked in prison. I run the school, work in Indianapolis every day. When me and my son moved away eight years ago, my son was like that, I'm gonna play football for my uncle. I said, when you get to high school, you're like in the third grade, something like that. I said, you could come back, let's move back here and you can play football for your uncle. My son was the top football player class 2017 and ended in Apple. Ended in Apple, made a tennis racket. My son ended up going eighth grade lower. That day he said, Dad, I'm in high school now. I said, Son, let's go. Let's go back. I come back to Saguino, from Indianapolis to Saguino. Are you serious? I can't, if I do my brother, will be the best thing for my son right now. Ain't no doubt in my mind, my son is the highest recruited football player ever in Bridgeport. Tell me one player can't get recruited by Michigan, Michigan State, Purdue, Ball State, Ohio State, and you keep going? Tell me one kid, Mr. Jackson is done, I'll share the job. By the way, do anybody here know the E2020 program I'm in? Okay, yeah. E2020, it helps the kid who messes up his ninth grade year, tenth grade year, eleventh grade year, help him get his grade by the quarter of GPA to help him get to college. That's what Lawrence Ford was after. I don't believe Lawrence Ford is being recruited by Alabama, Harvard, all of them other schools. There's no way in the world you want to come to Bridgeport and play football. There's no way. There's no way. With Lawrence Ford, yeah, other schools use kid, Lawrence Ford will use Bridgeport to get what he wanted also. Just like Phil, they run the school like a tiger. It's like, just like Jim Prologis is a full of factor. I thought I was in this game for two years, basketball or football. He's getting male, female, role playing, they get a bad rap. When they at home playing, they still away. They still away. These kids, they can cheer. The other day, a little kid, they walked, got shook on the court, kid like, oh, Phil would walk up there like this friend kid, and new kid, that's a sit out. New kids are afraid of that man. And the staff was afraid of too, because he had brought in my dead Anwar. I'm not the first guy y'all have heard, this is impossible. It's impossible. I have a friend comes to the game, white guy comes to the game, watching my son play. He already walked in the game, Phil would stop him, said, no, you don't go to the race on this side of the road again. With him, he was a white guy. He said, no, I'm here for Bridgeport. And this is what Phil did. He needs to be stopped. He needs to be stopped. I'm still, I'm loving that I love. I'm gonna get these kids who will walk up and down dense highway for hours to some
Good evening. I know all of you know, but March is National Reading Month. And we at Thomas White have had our kickoff. And our boarding teacher, Mrs. McTum, has written an email to invite all of our older members and every administrator in our district to come and be a guest reader for our children. And we want to thank Mr. Lang publicly for coming and reading to our children. There's one of our children who's really excited. Thank Mr. Lang. And we look forward to Mrs. Stelby coming and being a guest reader. I'm sad to report that that was all of the responses that we got for our children, which makes me very sad. Because when we reach out to you and we don't respond, gives us the impression that, one, you're a bit too busy, or, you know, you don't want to be involved. And this is a way for you to meet some of your staff that you are entitled of. It's a way for you to interact with the children that you oversee as well. So, we would like you to please reconsider. March is still too quickly small. So, we would really encourage you, our children's love story, and when we come in, especially male, they think that it's the greatest thing because you are showing that they are worthy for your attention. I would also like to address board members saying that they only know what they are told. This concerns me because I am a parent and I don't know anything that goes on in my children's home. And I am a daughter and don't worry, and it goes on in my mother's home. And, um, I am a daughter and don't know what goes on in my mother's home. And, um, I am a staff teacher and I don't know everything that goes on in my students' home. But I ask questions. And if I don't get answers, then I go to my mom's house to find things out. Um, I go to my children's home to find things out. I ask questions. If you're not sure what questions to ask, there have been many questions from our audience that are getting answers. Maybe you can try, um, starting with some of those. We have, um, take time to ask anybody out here. They have, uh, many questions that they would be willing to share with you. I would also like to address, um, ordering supplies. For the past few years, um, teachers have been directed that they have fifty dollars to spend for their classroom supplies for the year. And, um, we were shown, uh, school specialty and a lot of that you can get pretty good prices if you order it all. So, uh, for a few years, I got to order thirty six, because I teach kindergarten, and I got to order thirty six fat pencils, thirty sets of fat crayons, and, um, thirty six Big Jumbo glue sticks because they last longer. And that was like fifty dollars. And in twenty seven years that I've been in Bridgeport, every year I spend my own money and it has averaged between four hundred to eleven hundred dollars a year. And do you know now that the federal government says that I can't write that off? I only can claim two hundred and fifty dollars? This year, we were able to go to our superintendent's office and sign up for a fifty dollar Visa card to buy supplies. And as teachers, we tried to get those back to school supplies, so we gave grand amounts for twenty five percent. But we know that it don't go very far. We have a list of things that our parents need to supply. And, um, half of my twenty five children have broader supplies in. Um, we have run out numerous times and I don't need the child to go without, so I am, yeah, losing my own money. But just so that you know, fifty dollars doesn't go far. And when we ask us, go ahead and put the requisitions in, they're not going to go anywhere because we've been told there is not money. And when, I'm not a Facebook person, but it was embarrassing to me as an online and a teacher of this school district. My freedom is up already? But it wasn't embarrassing anyway to have to ask our alumni. I would like to see that money go to a scholarship. There is paper here and it's not being distributed. So please, help with this stuff out there. That was embarrassing and humiliating to know that my district should supply paper for my students. That was embarrassing. I'd rather see the money go to a scholarship.
Ralph Rennett? Good evening. My name is Ralph Rennett. Um, first thing I want to talk about is Camp Pride. Um, I heard that Camp Pride is kind of drug and mud throughout the city from Coach Fred Thompson, so. Uh, I want to speak on that. Camp Pride is an exposure camp for high school athletes in the, uh, not just the city of Sacramento, all over. We had kids come from as far as Detroit, Flint, Westside State, Stevie, Calabasas. All those cities. Kids come to Camp Pride. They come, and the reason it's called Camp Pride is because they wear your jersey, the high school jersey. And, uh, every school, every kid that came to Camp Pride had a jersey on except for two high schools. Those two high schools were Saginaw High and Pitt. Now, and that's fine if the high school coaches or whomever over there doesn't want to participate, the kids participate in Camp Pride, but parents believed in what we were offering, the service we offered to the kids in the community, so. What Coach Admiral Jackson did was, he brought jerseys over for these kids to put on because when your kid recruiting and college coaches out there, they can't identify a kid in just a t-shirt. So, just like him being a nice guy, a nice dude that he was, he offered his jerseys not to just art dealer kids or Saginaw High kids, he offered his jerseys to everybody. So college coaches down there and attendants were able to identify these kids by numbers. And I just think that, uh, you know, Fred Thompson, Fred Thompson has my personal cell phone number. If there's anything that he says to, to Bridgeport or the state of Michigan, he should have just called and flat out. So whoever has his phone number or email, I'm gonna phone call away. Um, as far as speaking on Coach Jackson's character, there's a lot of players and parents that are here today that they can speak on this character. Me being a city kid, I graduated from Saginaw High to God before, I grew up on Seventh and Kirk. I've never, ever seen a high school coach come to my neck with it, never. And what these kids are telling you guys today is real. Coaches are scared, don't you believe? Flat, that's just, that's just what it is. And Coach Jackson, these parents, they, they appreciate that because every parent gonna have transportation to get into Bridgeport. Every parent don't, you know, these, these kids don't, they don't have the resources to get out there and get the practice every day because that's required to be competitive when in high school ball. The game is changing every day for football, for high school athletes. And Coach Jackson understands that. So what he's doing is trying to offer these services to these kids every chance he gets. And I hope you guys are paying attention to me, there are a lot of, like, no, it doesn't seem like anyone's looking at me. The way I was, the way I was taught, my grandmother always raised me to look people, I don't even talk, I'm not even able to. Today, today I say, please, please reconsider Coach Jackson's employment, not only in football coach, but as, he's a mentor to these kids, he's a father figure, he's a big brother. He's everything to these kids. Because they don't have that. If you let Coach Jackson go, that's, that's another loss for Sacramento. Another loss. And for our coach, when I played high school football here in the city of Sacramento, we were competitive every year, year in and year out. And what, and what's happened is we, these coaches have gotten away from it. They have gotten away from doing the little things that matter to keep these kids focused on playing football. Not only just football, sports period, yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Ralph, how are you affiliated with Camp Pride?
I'm the director of Camp Pride.
And also, um, I mean, those jerseys that we're talking about, exactly what do they say on the jersey?
They were Bridgeport high school jerseys. Camp Pride is, we, we advertise it as, if you come from, where did you come from? Because how, these high school camps cost a lot of money. They cost a hundred bucks. And we charge, and then, and then these kids, these little cheap shirts that, that tear and rip off and all that. And what we did was, we know that you guys spend a lot of money on jerseys. That stuff ain't cheap. So what we did was, we lowered our costs and we promoted this, hey, coaches, if you let the kids wear their high school jerseys, they don't have to pay extra forty, fifty bucks or whatever bucks to print up shirts and get made. So, we have college coaches that's in attendance. And what they do is, is they, when they are trying to identify these kids, they can't identify these kids by just wearing these t-shirts and this stuff that they can barely see. So while these jerseys actually have a school where they're from and these big numbers on the back, it's nothing for a coach to sit back and see the camera and say, hey, who was number seventy seven? Bridgeport High School, let me call Coach Jackson and find out who this kid is. Or if this kid from Stevie, number forty five, whatever, they can call and, 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 you know, relay that message of, hey, who is this kid? Where is he from? I need information on this guy. And we don't, we, and by the bottom line, we don't have any, any type of programs like that in city Sacramento. So, what, what we were doing, and, and as far as all the coaches, all the people that were involved, we were trying to help the community. As far as Coach Jackson being a coach or anything like that, he never, he never stepped on it. The only coach, the only camp, the coach that, uh, Coach Jackson has ever coached. That was the NFL High School Player Recovery Camp that I had in the last two years here in city Sacramento, sponsored by NFL and National Guard. And I'm gonna do one last thing before I leave. This isn't speaking of Coach Jackson and his entire football staff and character. The NFL and the National Guard paid every coach two hundred dollars under the coaching camp. Coach Jackson and his staff took the two hundred dollars and every coach that he had to work the camp. And they used that money to pay their volunteers that, that helped coach at Bridgeport. They could have pocketed that money and turned it over to that kitchen to get it how you live. But they, they send the, the volunteers that they have that come on and help them coach these kids every day, year in and year out. They took that money that they got paid from the NFL and, and gave it to their volunteers. I just don't think you're gonna find nobody else like Coach Jackson coaches kids. This is home, this is great for them.
Rick, fill the desk here.
Good afternoon, um, Jason Farmer. Um, I am here on behalf of, uh, the American League of Bridgeport and, uh, Coach Admiral Jackson. There was a, a letter from the state and there were two names named with us, Admiral Jackson and myself. They stated that there was security violations from Fred Thompson to the state, to Bridgeport. I have, I'm not gonna talk about the specifics, I'm just gonna talk about the process. This whole investigation, not one person contacted me. Not Fred Thompson, not the Saginaw school board, not Bridgeport athletic department, not the administration. Not one person asked for my opinion or my side of the story. I got no due process. No one asked a word until I found out that I was let go. That's not right. That's not an investigation, that's partisan investigation for the ones up.
DeBeeter Manley?
Good evening. To our board members and to the chair, I, as a parent of this community, I have a few concerns. First of all, I would like to thank the Lord that you are doing. I'm not visiting my high school and I have seen some good changes, so I'm grateful for that. But I'm still concerned about preparing our children for today's competition. Meaning that our kids need to be ready to compete with neighboring schools as well. We've heard about all the resources that the teachers are in need of. I'm asking you to listen to the prayers of the teachers. I've talked to the teachers quite often concerning my middle schooler and my freshman. And the first thing they respond is, we don't have the resources that we need. Our school in this district, this district needs STEM programs. This district needs innovative teachers who have the resources to think out of the box and use material that other students are using. It is a sad day when my daughter, who can talk to me about her brains, who goes to other schools and learning about engineering in fourth grade. We have a lot of students here who are looking forward to being prepared and have the foundation that they're able to succeed. So I'm asking you, as a parent of this community, as board members, can we work together to make a difference for our children? It's not about individuality, it's about the children. And so I'm looking around and I'm looking at all these young faces and these parents who have been turned from athletics to finances to, um, all of the teaching staff and Mr. Jackson. There's some issues with it and I'm hoping that that will all work out with the benefit of the district. But at the same time, where is our focus? Are we really focused on our children or do we, are we misguided? We're paying a superintendent that's not providing for us a service, but let, let, but at the same time, do we let go of a, 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 uh, athletic coach, I mean, this football, I'm not too ready for this situation, just outside of what I heard. So please, take the heat of the people and let us be physically responsible. Using the knowledge that this district receives to enhance our classrooms, to get all the stuff that we know needs to be changed. Let us do that together. I'm here to help. I'm, I'm glad again for what you're doing, but we still have work to do. There were some questions asked to you by Mr. Ryan's. And I'm asking that you will consider those questions and come back to us with some answers. I work in, in a situation where I am very familiar with boards. Boards should be accountable, they should be transparent. So please, again, I implore you to be a participant with us, let us all work together to make a change to this district. I'm proud for my children to be here. But at the same token, I'm concerned because I understand that unless they get the tools that they need right now, I ask Mr. McCarthy, what is this district doing for my child right now? Not five years from now, not ten years from now, but right now. So can we all work together that we can make a difference? Thank you.
Um, basically my question is, uh, you guys have a meaning of zero tolerance for drugs than I do? Zero tolerance to me is not at all. Uh, if a student is caught with these drugs, why aren't these basically kicked out of school? They shouldn't be brought back after three or four days of suspension while you're scaling up vacation tax. So I just want to know, your meaning of that, yes? Because my meaning means no, none. Now, these other students that are in classes, have to deal with these students that are coming back, basically thinking it's a joke. And that's how I feel, like, if it's a joke, probably students will doubt it. And I think there was some students that were caught right in, in the school. In their hands. Doing it in the bathrooms, I guess. I want to know, why are these students back? You know, how? And plus, the other thing that these teachers have to deal with, now they gotta deal with this too. I mean, come on, what's going on?
Um, good evening. I am here to invite you, um, to our first robotic competition. We had here at high school, um, we had grant filled robot and I didn't exactly know what I was getting myself into because I was, I guess, misinformed beginning. Um, however, I did take, take, uh, that online, we started a robot, um, group and I'm gonna list the names of our, our members of the robotic team. Ashley Huff is the captain and she's gonna be our backup driver. Jared Welch, he will be our main driver. Ty, Ty Graham, Angela Fitzgerald did the programming on the computer toy robot. And Brennan Ayala, he's our pit for, um, cannon. I'm proud, I'm very proud of these five students because we did this without the help of an engineer. Um, we don't have, um, it was mentioned, we don't have STEM program, we don't have the resources. However, it has been offered and because I want to continue doing this. Um, I'm not an engineer, not, I'm a captain inclined, I didn't even know what screwdrivers to use when they were asking me to handle screwdrivers. But I was offered, um, by Mr. McCarthy, he sent me an email about the STEM program that will be coming out. I am applying for that because I refuse to let robotic team go after this year. I want to continue because the kids have done a phenomenal job. Um, we had two other persons helping us out, Santos Cruz, who's my dad, and Isaiah Brooks, who's my son. Um, because we are also, we were able to have members of the country help us. So because we have been granted, when I get involved in something, my entire family is involved in something. Um, we currently are looking for sponsors because the first, the first grant, it does not pay for all the other expenses that have been inquired, um, that we have. Those shirts that all the teams, we went to, to watch the competition and we are kind of behind. We need shirts that say our, have our robotic team name on it, um, with the big team number in the back. We, uh, we have to have sponsors to put on this robot and we don't have those sponsors yet. So if anybody is willing to, um, I don't know, send somebody our way who could sponsor us for shirts, um.
Cindy, I will sponsor your shirts.
I'll put it on the way.
My company will sponsor your shirts.
I have the information here, I'm gonna cast up to you guys when I'm done here. It is for our first event. I would love, love for, for, um, to have people come to watch us because the teams that do have followers, they're, they're just, they're community girls. And I want my five students to go there and not have anybody in the stands for them. And I want my five students to go there and not have anybody in the stands for them. So please come and support us. Thank you.
Ms. Weaver? Did you mention that your team participated this weekend in robotic competitions?
No, we did not. We went and scouted our competition, kind of like, held guys above and put above theirs. We went and scouted our competition and, where was I? I'm hopeful. It was at Kettering University, went to Kettering University. And I think we're gonna be competitive, I really do. I'm so proud of kids because I know they will be competitive out there.
When is it, Cindy? Tell us when it is.
Our first competition is March twenty, twenty-first. And it is at Midland Dollar High School. The starting time is, how many? Eight AM?
Eight AM to eighteen AM.
Eight AM to eight PM.
Friday, Saturday, eight, eight AM to thirteen PM.
The competition, or this one that you have, is at Midland Dollar High School. On April second and April third, we will be competing in Lansing. I'm hoping that we can find some money because the teams stay overnight at that Lansing competition because we start out so early in the morning and can't pay our robots and stuff and everything. So we need to accommodate our hotels for our five students. Anybody in the audience wants to fly their head in camera? Thank you.
Johnny Williams?
Good afternoon. I am Johnny Williams. I taught here at Bridgeport Volleye School District, coached here at Bridgeport Volleye School District, and said where you are. I am a former Bridgeport Volleye Board Member. And as I said, on the board, I took great pleasure in presenting Anwar Jackson to the board to becoming our head football coach. I was very proud to do that. I was very proud of Anwar then and I am very proud of Anwar now. Some of you know Anwar as a father, a brother, an uncle, a coach. But football players know Anwar as a father, a coach, a brother, a uncle, all in the book. Anwar grew up here and got his education through Bridgeport Volleye School. Anwar belongs to us, we need to support Anwar. We should be grateful that we have an alumni, an young one at that, to come here, back here and put into our youth what Anwar did for our school. When Anwar plays football, all touchdowns were made through Anwar. Anwar was the only one, the only football player making those touchdowns. So to come back, come back to Bridgeport and work with our kids is great, that's great. I don't know anyone else, I mean, have any of you come and know that? Like I said, I coached, I grew up at Bridgeport. But like I said, I love Bridgeport. I lived in Bridgeport and these kids love Anwar, I love Anwar. And I'm just asking that we do, before we just diss Anwar, that we do some investigations, seem like that we would help our own and support our coach. And to me, I think that Anwar is always a great coach. Kids all over from other schools would love to come and be a part of this, have the experience to experience being under Coach Anwar. Anwar is a decent young man. And like I said, to get young men to come back and alumni of ours to work with our kids is a plus. And I ask that we reconsider Anwar Jackson to be our coach here for our children. It takes a lot to work with children and you have kids of your own. That's a lot of the time he's putting in with other kids than he's on your kids if they play sports here. But I'm just asking that we consider Anwar Jackson to be our head football coach. Thank you.
Anwar Jackson?
Good evening, good evening. First of all, always think everybody, I would very heartily respect that. And this is my kids, I'll speak about kids. I do want to say that as an alumni, I apologize. The last thing I want to do, I know the news is gonna be here. I don't want to bash Bridgeport. I am a loyal, loyal, loyal person, and very loyal. Things were asked of me to do for this district, on and off the record, I did it. I did it with no questions asked because I felt like and I was told that it was in the best interest of Bridgeport's volleyball world. And I did, no questions asked. These young men are great. I do, once again, I appreciate that. It's hard. I had a whole little plan that I drove out to say and it was right or was not. I'm asking that you, you look at it, that's all I'm asking. Give me my new process. If you don't want me here, that's perfectly fine. But remember when you do that, I am a alumni, I am you. So if you slap me or you throw me to the curb, you are throwing yourself to the curb. The report that I have in the community is because you guided and instructed as a pupil here in this district. Once again, going back to it, I'm a loyal. I moved to Flint my junior year of high school. I drove back and forth to Flint, from Flint to stay at Bridgeport. I had an opportunity to go other schools. I chose to stay here because I wanted to be here. I grew up on the east side of Saginaw, two blocks away from Saginaw High. I could have gone to Saginaw High. My whole family lived at Saginaw High. I wanted something different, I wanted to go out and be prepared in a world to where I can communicate with anybody, everybody across this country. And I am able to do that right now. I am because of what I learned here. The instruction, the guidance that I had at Bridgeport. I am at Bridgeport, I am. I apologize that these people are here in this further of actions. I apologize. But what I won't apologize is for the report I have in my community. I would not apologize for that. These kids love you, they're speaking to you now. It's not anything that I'm doing, I don't have to tell the kid to come to Bridgeport. The way I walk, the way I talk reflects you. I am at Bridgeport, thank you.
Is there any unfinished business or just adjustments?